All right, what did we just?
State of America. And to the Republic, for which stands one nation, under our and liberty and justice for all.
All right, everyone seated. Operations and presentations, we have none before us, which brings us to item five. Public petitions, communications, and vote participation on any subject within jurisdiction of town council with a two-minute limit. If you're on a mobile device or Zoom, you can start nine and raise hand function. Or if you're in the audience, you can approach the table and state your name and address for the record. And we'll start online with Claudette Morehouse. Sorry, you might be muted again, Claudette. I just asked you to unmute and I think it cross streams. You're gonna mute. Yeah, there you go. Good.
Good evening, everybody. Claudette Morehouse, eighty-nine Merlot Way, Tallinn. I'm just in reference to your last meeting where it was stated that in regarding to the contaminated wells, because we don't hear anything, it doesn't mean that we're not discussing it. Just wondering if there has been any discussion since the last meeting? And if there will be any discussion tonight regarding the contaminated wells as far as any updates since last month, since last the meeting that you had. Thank you.
We'll switch to in-person. Anyone like the groups table?
Hi, Celeste Undershow, nineteen Joseph Drive. I'm here tonight to urge the council to vote no on item number eight point two. Our green has been here for three hundred years. I'd like to see it continue as a green. I also understand that the this is probably not a complete picture. I heard that the streetlights were going to be put along the sidewalk. I don't know, the project seems to be not in public review. Also, if the town is going to be putting sewer hookup on the east side of the green, the road will be dug up and people's sidewalks are going to be dug up for that hook up to happen. And I don't know why at that time sidewalks can be made ADA accessible, at least on the east side of the green. But I have.
Thank you, Celeste. All right, we'll switch to online participation. Anyone on Zoom? The, George?
Well, I'm not Connor footballs. Well, I'm all for saving the money. It looks like quite a savings. I have nothing wrong with concrete. I do have a block sidewalk that we did all the things that we're supposed to do. And ten, twelve years later now, we have ups and downs. The water does heave it, things like that. And after a while, it's going to be a big repair job. I think coffee's the way to go, so. A lot cheaper, and I think it'll actually last longer, is my thing. Thank you.
Thank you, George. Back to Zoom, we have Jody Coleman Marzialo.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman. I'm trying to undo my camera and it doesn't want to let me. I'm sorry. I just wanted to, I wanted to know Thursday, I had, on Wednesday, I had a conversation with town manager Foley, and he said if we wanted to get a volunteer to come up with a design, that would be fine, because there were. I didn't have funds in my budget, so I was able to find a volunteer to come up with an alternative design plan, which would cover the east side of the tiling green. We've never had a proposal like this before. And with our previous town manager, who was the interim one, Lisa Hancock, she provided three different alternatives, and nothing was ever similar to the one that I provided the town council on Thursday, with it meandering around the trees. It's in the red line. It was the red lined proposal on top of the town manager's proposal as an alternative plan, which would, could have some cost savings if we reduced it by one foot, which would save exactly about twenty percent in materials as well. And I would like that to be considered for the eight twenty-four review if possible. It's nice to have options instead of just one plan. And I would appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Jody. There's no one else in the public in person? We'll continue with Zoom with Sean Lappin.
Hello, my name is Sean Lappin, one sixty-eight Mountain Spring Road. I am just echoing Claudette's comments about looking for any sort of updates regarding water contamination in wells. The last town meeting, there was an indication that a report was very close to finishing for, in particular, one sixty-eight Mountain Spring Road, my property. I'm just wondering if there's been any movement in terms of trying to release that to the public, as well as movement on others' properties to try to rectify the situation. Because as it sits, as everyone knows, I don't have potable water, and it's actively eating away at my infrastructure in my house. And sure enough, in the last week and a half, I just got my Tallinn Town Tax Bill, which I will pay, but begrudgingly, because obviously it's a little frustrating to get taxed and then also have your town poison you. Thanks.
Thank you, Sean. Anyone else on Zoom, if you'd like to speak, star nine, word raise can't function? Going once. Going twice. That brings us to item six, public hearing items, which we have none. Seven A reports of boards and committees responsible of the council. The Fire Health Subcommittee met on the sixth, fifteenth. We did end up sixteen hundred, less than anticipated for insurance. We did a change of order for a well pump for Station three forty, not to exceed forty-five hundred dollars. There was a pretty robust conversation about a change of order regarding the addition of concrete curbing to raise the metal panels on Station three forty. There was concern with the contractor submitting some very last-minute changes to the design. The reasoning was sufficient. I think the final vote was six to one on that change order, but we did make some strong requests of the contractor that he's going to request support. We need their presence to review them and get justification, so. And that is, yeah, I believe, actually, acquisition, I believe we're still waiting for an update on the assessment of the property being considered for acquisition, so we're hopefully going to have a meeting soon to get updates on that. And that's it for me. Art of the committee?
About four of us here from that committee, so we met in twenty-second, and one of the items was funded for twelve thousand dollars, renovations for Adams Adventure Play, which should be coming to the council maybe next. They moved that forward with a little bit of stipulation in there, but I'm sure you'll see that. And then we also discussed light in for the green, the consideration of seventeen thousand dollars. We're, we're going to keep it on this spreadsheet, but we're asking the chair of the Historic District to provide some more information on it. But it's definitely something we're going to continue talking about. I think Brian mentioned some other light in, right, Brian? Maybe encompassing all the statements, is that?
There's a lot of options.
So we want to just make sure we're giving the most we can for the cost of it. And then and then we just went through a typical spreadsheet. And we just, I think it's one point six million dollars, but the funding, and I think we all agree, we've been working really hard and really using the money in the best interest of the community and helping every area, so. I'm very fortunate to be working with Brian, Tammy, and Lisa, so it's been good. We've been working well together. Yeah.
Thank you. And then Roads Alt Task Force, is there any updates there to provide? Either Brian or, if there's any meeting.
There are no updates to provide. We're still waiting.
That brings us to seven B, reports of town council gazons. I'm going to start left to right, so Councilmember.
Thank you. I was at the Historic District Commission meeting, sorry, last Wednesday. The days are sort of blurting together. Yes, Wednesday, the twenty-first. They did a certificate of appropriateness, and that's what they called for, a property on the green. And there was a wonderful presentation by the Veterans Recognition Commission, talking about the memorial on the green and their vision for that memorial, which was just wonderful. There was a robust conversation about sidewalks, as Jody mentioned in her public comment. The Historic District Commission wanted to submit an alternative, an alternate option, which I think we've seen, it came to our email, right? Everybody saw that? And that's it, they they can, oh, they finalized their guidelines. I'm sorry, I forgot that one day. They finalized their guidelines and they used the printery at Tallinn High School to print it. It looks really good. I guess that was a great learning experience for the kids in the school to be able to print it out, and it was also cost-effective. I hope more town organizations try to use that option during school. During the school year, though, they're not doing it during the summer. And they, so the town now has a public book of guidelines for the green, and I believe there's a copy in the town manager's office, that there was a copy going to the library, et cetera, that there would be copies available for residents, and I think it's up on our website, too. So there's some more defined guidelines on the vision for the green and what homeowners need to do in order to stay, you know, kind of within those parameters. So as always, that group is, so they're, they're very important.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember. Councilcall. All right, thank you. I only have one tomorrow. AP Water Commission will be meeting for a special meeting. I think they had like a quorum earlier in the month and had to reschedule. How's the new chair? Council member?
Veterans Recognition Commission did meet on the fifteenth. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to attend because of work requirements that I would refer people to the minutes. I did try and access minutes so I could at least sort of give an overview, but unfortunately, it's, we're done on Google Docs, and I'm one of those people that I'm not a Google Doc. So, you know, so I was unable to see it, but I would for anybody to the minutes when they did come out. But from what my discussions were with other members, that it was exactly reflected as what a councilwoman Murray did present, so.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilman, your check?
So June fifteenth, the Commission on People with Disabilities met, unfortunately, I kind of made that, the doctor graduated. So what I was able, the minutes are already posted, it was, looks like a short meeting, and they discussed the ADA on the green. Rev. Felity mentioned that the human service department has hired a new administrative assistant, which will be great to help them out in their department. And I think that's really, really a minutes out there. If you want to look further into it. And then the Mental Health Task Force met on June nineteenth. Unfortunately, it wasn't for them, but we were still able to discuss with David Orbork, he's from the Hockenham Valley, the Mental Health Task Force. Task Force has been, you know, working to try and get a prevention specialist in our community. He went over, which sounds like they offer a lot of different things that human resort, human service department cannot provide. Can give you a few things that they can. In the Hockenham Valley, can, they have fourteen clinical staff that could help, including psychiatrists, individual therapists, family therapists, domestic violence, family domestic medication treatment for opioid addiction, and services for alcohol addiction, just a few. The cost of this person would be about forty thousand dollars, which can be funded according to, as believe Rev. said, Brian, you could currently run, would be used on the opioid grid for this person. And a lot of this stems from the survey that, you know, we spent the fifty thousand dollars, that's what I'm going to know. I know Tammy had asked when we get an update from the Mental Health Task Force, and I think I heard next month, Brian, is that what you, like I said?
Well, there, I saw them in the shoot coming up.
Yeah, I think they originally scheduled.
Everything she said is accurate, that the, based on the opioid settlements, we'll have some money to spend. The best ways to spend that money have been discussed, and through the task, the task force that she's talking about, they did a fantastic job. I recommended an opioid specialist, prevention specialist, sorry, for the town, which we currently do not have budget, so it's going to be the only way to pay for it, so it's, it's all good stuff.
Yeah, it's a lot, and, yeah, so.
Yeah, and I think, speaking with Bad or Hustle John, at one point, they said that the task force was planning to speak about the final recommendations or next steps at that meeting, but because they had the quorum, they sent a table that the next meeting where they have a quorum to have those type of discussions.
Yeah, so.
Hopefully, they'll be, I think, maybe the end of July or over the summer at some point, coming forward with those.
Yeah, and Madhu has resigned, and he's been a great asset to the task force as the vice chair, just has a lot of information, so I'll have to double-check if they even have enough to have meetings, and I think they might be one or two people. Sure, I would have to find out for sure.
Yeah, and check the calendar, see if the membership roster's up today.
Because it's definitely low. So anyways, but other than that, it's all good stuff, and that's all I have.
Thank you. That brings us to eight, new business, eight point one, is consideration of a resolution to transfer fifty thousand dollars in the launch for a bunch, budget to legal fees.
Okay, the, when, when a town hires a resident trooper, they're charged based on what the trooper costs at the state. The longer the trooper's been on, the more expensive they are through attrition. We have some newer troopers, so then we were able to show some savings, so we have some extra money there. However, we also had some unanticipated legal fees from unanticipated legal matters, and also on top of the two Yukon, or Yukon, union contracts that we did in this previous year, where we have a shortcoming in the amount of money we have to pay off our legal fees. So this, due to our strictly adhered to fiscal policies here in the town of Tallinn, the amount we're looking to transfer falls under, I just can't authorize, we had to come to town council, so this is our ask of you to allow us to do that.
Are there any questions from Councilmembers?
What's the threshold to come to us to ask us this question?
That is three percent of the department budget.
So are we talking about three percent of the legal department budget, or three percent of the trooper policy?
I'm going to have to go to Lisa on that. You got deep on that. What do you got, Lisa?
I think it's both, but yeah.
Yeah, it's three percent of the trooper's budget that he can't authorize anything, you know, in excess of that. And this would have been in excess of three percent of that budget.
And that's by town policy?
That's by charter.
It's in the charter. Okay.
I think it's nine fourteen or something like that. I'm not sure of the charter section.
Yep, C, C nine fourteen.
Thank you. And this is for the current, I'm sorry, the current year fiscal, the current fiscal year that's due to end in three days?
Correct.
Okay. Will this bring us, is this sufficient to fund the illegal fund? Illegal shortfalls?
Lisa? Fingers crossed.
Hey, I hope so, fingers crossed. No, I haven't seen final legal bills, but I'm hoping this will cover it.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Just the main question I have, is this going to affect any of the, of the services, town services, or affect the response, the ability to respond from the, from the residency troopers or anybody that within the law enforcement budget?
None whatsoever. No services done at all. It's just that we got, we had, we showed some savings in the cost of a trooper.
Okay. All right, thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Yeah, I think my only comment is it's unfortunate we can't use those savings for other purposes, but I'm glad that, you know, rather than having to hit our budget or take away from others, there is an opportunity to transfer funds from an excess to cover a shortfall and incur.
So since it went over, are we, and then I'll go over again next year?
We're going to file that one under the fingers crossed category again. I highly doubt it. Lisa, would you concur with that?
I concur. I, you know, this was an unusual year in both the personnel, legal services, as well as the regular services. So hopefully, we won't have the same situations.
All right, seeing no further discussion, I'll adjutant motion to approve resolutions outlined in eight point one. So moved, so by Councilmember, suggested by Councilmember Murray, I was in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That is unanimous. That brings us to eight point two, which is consideration of resolution making of eight dash twenty-four referral to the Planning and Zoning Commission. This is in reference to the sidewalks on the green project, so. Take it over to Brian to explain why we're making this referral.
Okay, so the eight twenty-four statute, I'll try to put it in the simplest of terms here. Whenever there's a significant improvement to a property or a building in town here, we should submit it to zoning for their approval or disapproval. That being said, it's somewhat of a gray matter, and as to what exactly the significant improvement, again, I'm putting in simpler terms, actually is and how it's defined. However, in discussion with our town attorney and our folks in planning and our folks in zoning, we thought this would be the safer, more conservative, more transparent, more inclusive way of moving forward, is to send it over and get another set of eyes put on it by the zoning, the ZDM. And so that's, that's what this is a request to do.
Thank you. Are there any questions from councilors?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Um, so, I mean, I took a quick look at the statute that we're dealing with here, but is it something that it's not clear as far as whether or not this is an approval or disapproval, or just a, you know, recommendation to the town council, where is this something that would basically override town council and our, and what we've already basically indicated we would like to see and have already approved?
Absolutely not. And, and depending on what happens with zoning in this project, certainly we'll have options down the road as well.
Yeah, I think from my perspective, it's kind of more of a favorable or unfavorable report, or they could do a third option, they could be kind of mixed, it could be favorable, but we recommend this. Or it could be unfavorable unless you do this, you know. But I think overall, it's more of a providing a professional opinion from the zoning perspective and from Dave Corcoran's office, PCC members.
Okay, thank you. That, that was the main concern that I had, because the statute isn't really clear. It just says that they, that it's something that should be reviewed by them, but it doesn't state whether or not that it's actually something that is binding, or if it's something that is, you know, essentially overruling for the town governing body.
Yeah, I think it'd be comfortable to like the state legislature when they put bills out. I think they can publish a joint favorable report to the legislature, but they could still sign it off the bill and kill it, or they could pass it based off of what's directed.
Thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Your check, and then Councilmember.
Brian, did you talk to a foreman about, is there a timeline on this? I mean, it's like, I feel like there's always this, the speed bump always going, so I just want to know if you, there's going to be due date or something, that it's going to come back to us, so that way, once we get the recommendations, which I would look forward to, still keep going.
We have carefully mapped out multiple scenarios together with planning and our town attorney and others as to how projects like this could unfold. And absolutely, there is a definitive timeline, and this is a part of the, I believe, the most transparent process, with more to come, but I don't, I don't see it. Certainly considering that it's been going on for years and years, this is a manageable timeline, in that ZBA has thirty-five days to act once it's referred to them.
That was thirty-five days, right?
What's that, thirty-five days?
Is it CDA or?
Easy, easy C.
Okay. Pick an alphabet.
Yeah.
Okay, Councilmember.
Thank you. Has there been a draft agenda that has this on it? Like, is this going to be heard next week, or, I'm sorry, in two weeks of planning and zoning, or do we not have that scheduled date yet?
On July tenth, planning and zoning will meet. This will be on the agenda.
And who will be bringing it to planning and zoning to discuss and be able to answer questions?
I don't know if we've gotten that far yet. We haven't discussed that yet, but certainly if I needed to do that, I'm happy to do exactly that.
I think we've gone with contingent on us passing the resolution if it goes forward. I think that would absolutely be on the agenda, but.
Yeah, fair enough. I'm sorry, yes. Assuming it passes, it would go.
My, my assumption would be most likely, since this was on my CHA, or probably via rep, and working in concert with Dave Corcoran to present this, and any other town staff being suitable to answer questions.
Thank you.
Okay, so are we asking, or then as a council, are we asking Brian to ensure that there is adequate personnel at this zoning meeting to make sure that any questions of the zoning work can be answered?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and that's why we're trying to be as thorough as possible with this documentation, and I know there's supplemental documentation before us on the table, which will be incorporated into the minutes in terms of the, the cost as well as the, the three D analysis, but this is all sort of supplemental to what's already been provided in the package.
Okay. Do we have this transparent timeline available for the public to know about in terms of how this project is going to be proceeding?
All meetings are public. Everything's defined in charter, and there's too many variables to determine exactly when or what it is going to be. Again, I don't know how zoning is going to handle it. They can handle it in one day, they can handle it in all thirty-five. I don't know how we're going to vote tonight, so it's, it's difficult to proceed out.
Okay. One of the requests that I made in our previous council, or last council meeting, was to put together a timeframe with thresholds to meet and dates on those. Is that something that will be able to be accommodated for our next meeting so that we have more information?
Assuming you're asking me, and assuming you are, and assuming you are going to pass this eight twenty-four on to the council, then I can tell you what the next step will be. They have thirty-five days to approve or disapprove, favorable or unfavorable, towards this project on the green. They could do it in a shorter period of time. If they do, then I'll be able to give you a date as to how we would move forward. But the longest at this point would be thirty-five days from when they get it on a tenth of that. The next, the thirty-fifth day would be on, their next meeting on eight fourteen.
Okay. So can we get an update on the timeline at our next council meeting?
I don't know. What I'm saying is I don't know if we can do a timeline.
Oh, I just want an update as to whether a timeline is coming. Like, they're going to be on Monday, July tenth. We have a meeting on July eleventh. Can we get an update on July eleventh on what happened at the, the PZC meeting? And what the next steps are, and the next step might be, we're waiting from the ZC?
That would be absolutely accurate.
Okay. Excellent. So I think I continue, I will continue to request that when we reach a point where a timeline is something we can produce, I would ask that we do produce one and that we make sure that we follow up on any previous communications from the town to ensure that the neighbors are properly notified as a follow-up to a notification they got years ago. I understand that they're waiting for another notification, so if we need to do that, and if we need to have a special meeting just to talk about sidewalks, I know that sounds super appealing to everyone, because we love talking about sidewalks, but. But I, I think we want to make sure that we are being transparent and also not dragging our feet. I, I think I would like to see this resolved by the end of the summer with a plan in place to go forward. And we still have some time, right? We have maybe two more months or so to get that done. So let's, my request is we keep going on that issue. When this gets presented to planning and zoning, are you gonna be bringing more than one plan or are they just gonna be looking at the one plan, Brian?
Uh, just the one plan at this point, but I'm happy to discuss others with them and other options. I'm sure they'll be, have some ideas themselves.
Awesome. Okay. Oh, I'm sorry. Just one more thing is if planning zoning wants us to go to design advisory board, which is underneath their purview, does that extend to thirty five days or are we still within?
Negative, thirty five days.
Yeah, that's the cap.
Got it. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Yeah.
Thank you. Sorry.
Council, you're checking.
I just have one, one question. Is this coming up very close to your timeline on when you wanted to start the sidewalks? It seems like it's fairly close to what you were projecting. What I thought was over ambitious to be.
I wanted to start the sidewalks last summer, so negative. But, but I, I, I am confident and I have some steps, you know, I wish I could tell you a timeline as to the day I want to have a public hearing, the day I want to send letters out to the, the, the neighborhood and the abutters of the, the HDC, the people with disabilities, and EV blast, you know, everything announcing a public hearing. And all, all those things involved. But again, there's a lot, a lot of moving parts here where you can't really predict those out, but those steps will be taken as to putting a date on them, difficult. Theorize, but it would just be a theory on a timeline at this point, but I'm confident that before summer's end, we'll have a definitive answer one way or the other.
Okay, Council Luba.
Thank you. I, I mean, just sort of reiterate, I think that you could sort of tell a bit of the urgency. I think that this, you know, I'll be the one to say that we'd like to have this done before the end of session for us. I mean, that's something that I think that all the members here, we've been involved in this, we'd all like to get a vote on it before, you know, before the end of session. So it's something that, you know, whatever the timeline is, that's, that, that's, it's got, that's, that's the deadline. You know, even if it's the last day of session, you know, that I think that, you know, just so it's clear.
I'm confident that you'll get your wish.
I, I understand. I'm just saying that, you know, so that this is more for the people that are out there, like the planning and zoning, all the other, all the other boards that are, that are operating alongside us on this, that this is something that, you know, I'll be the one, because I'm that guy that I gotta make sure that it's understood. So, thank you.
Thank you, Council Luba. Any other comments or questions?
I second.
All right, seeing that I'll adjourn the motion to approve the resolution as outlined in eight point two.
Can we amend, I'm sorry, can we amend that motion to request that the town manager ensure appropriate staff are at the planning and zoning meeting to ensure questions from PZC can be answered to make the referral and ask the town manager to ensure appropriate staff are at that meeting to answer questions.
So I don't know if, I mean, we're technically solely involving the letter of the, of the charter in terms of what we're making the referrals or the state statutes.
Okay. Motion after we pass this one?
I I think to be honest, I think we're, we probably impressed it very, I mean, we've imparted it very strongly, Mr. Foley, that we need staff there. And I think, I think it's ingrained in his brain at this point, and I think there'll be some follow up conversations offline with another staff and I think with leadership of council to ensure whatever the process is that there's representation there as possible.
Thank you. That's sufficient. I appreciate that.
No worries.
I will make the motion as written as agenda item eight point two.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Council Luba. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Discussion?
Oh, sorry. Yes, so there is, there is a motion by Council Murray, seconded by Council Luba. Is there any additional discussion? My apologies.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna ask. I remember, I was just gonna make a comment that this is one of those other things that is frustrating, like the board event stuff that we have public meetings and we do this after we go on something, just kind of some backwards, like we should have went to plan and zoning. So honestly, I don't know how I'm gonna vote because it seems I, I think it's actually really unfair that we're going backwards, but that's just my personal comments. I think, I don't know. The chart is never gonna open up again. But I think that's something that should, if it does, it sounds like the chatter up there, that's probably, I personally think in fairness to all boards. That should be like that. That that makes sense.
No, it does. I think it's, I think it's also kind of a, I'll say a lesson learned, but I think it's definitely, if there's any future projects on public spaces like this, if this is the process being to go forward, no, I agree, it's definitely to be imperative of the future council, you know, future leadership to make sure that the process goes, you know, if this is a, you know, a project that is being considered for safer or from money, monies, and if the town project with this, that it would, you know, be as fine, go and get referral, get approval from PZC or get favorable means that we brought back to the council. I think that's the process we're saying it should go, that the concept should have gone to PZC. At some point after all these other discussions and then brought to us in terms of the authorization of funds.
But anyways, that's just another lesson learned and nice to have a fact that, that it's frustrating that, you know, like anyway, definitely, can I?
I just wanted to share my experience with doing an eight twenty four referral to planning and zoning with Birch Grove. We actually brought that project to planning and zoning a number of times because the project changed. So it, every time we brought it to planning and zoning, it felt like it was an urgent matter, right? Like we had to I, I need you, I, I stood up in front of planning and zoning multiple times and said, I really need you guys' tasks tonight. Because if you don't, like, it's gonna delay the timeframe down the road. In my experience on that project, which I understand was an emergency project and had, you know, huge piece of land in town, et cetera, et cetera. It, we did go to planning and zoning almost last minute more than once. And not that that makes this process any better, but I don't think it's that unusual to go to planning and zoning once we know we have appropriations in place. Once we know we have a proposed plan in place. And this might be the, the most appropriate time for it to go to planning and zoning. So just from my perspective in process, this didn't raise any red flags to me, but I understand what you're saying too. I, I don't necessarily think it would have been harmful to do it earlier even, so. Right, the, the statute requires us to get a referral from planning and zoning in case there's a major zoning issue.
You know, think of like the water. There's so many different issues that could fall into the planning and zoning piece of it.
And I think our town's zoning department works really closely with our town manager's office, which may not happen in other towns. Certainly in larger towns where zoning regulations might be a lot more complicated than they are in Tallinn. I, I have always been very impressed with, with the way our planning office works with our town manager's office. But I think in other towns, this requirement might make a lot more sense than it does here in Tallinn. Both of them follow up.
And Council Khan? Any further discussion? All right, and because I heard some hesitancy, I'll do roll call vote. I'll go from left to right. Council Murray?
Aye.
Council Khan? Council Benucci?
Aye.
Council Luba?
Aye.
Council, you're checking.
Yeah, this is really tough because I really feel bad for planning and zoning. I just feel like we're just, I just I'll say aye, but I also just wanna say that it's this is really one of those toughest ones. Not because of transparency, I just feel like it's backwards.
That's fair. Thank you. And I have an aye as well. So that is unanimous. That brings us to eight point three. Meetings of vacancies on various boards and commissions, which there are none. Though we do have a few applications in the pipeline, and I know Council Luba and Council Khan are working through those. I hope we should have some appointments on our next regular meeting.
Yes.
Item nine, there is no old business. That brings us to ten reporter that town manager. Could any updates from your new around town you'd like to report on?
Hi, in relation to the public comment earlier, there, again, we, there is no, we're still waiting to hear from the consultant on in relation to the salt and wells and the task force. The, one of the people, public comment, they came in, said there was lights in relation to the sidewalk. There are no new lights with this sidewalk plan. Any new lights that would be a part of this project would be with the blessing of the HDC. That's not a part of the plan. That's misinformation. We've received two grants. One was a loose acknowledgement, and that is for social media de-escalation. I really look forward to that. And we're gonna be one of the first people that I know of that have done something like this in the town, and our town, I think, is in a good place. And to receive it and to move forward. Received money for our parks market as well. You know, a couple thousand dollars for signage and such. It's been a little slow, but we're happy to have that and happy to to our state rep, running help she gave us in that and to Pramega for getting them. Our gazebo project at the park is moving along great. They're really doing a good job and really improving the water view. A lot of, there are a lot of moving parts over there. And DPW assisting with that is, is going well. If you have a chance, I stopped by today. The summer camp is packed. The beach on Crandall's Park was mobbed today. It was fantastic to see. I, I'd like to make some improvements over there and, and will with my, the best of my ability moving forward. We are hosting some vacancies, including two DPW workers. We had some applicants. We're gonna look for a couple more. Just to beef up the, the applicant pool at this point. And I know we talked about it at the last meeting, we will announce publicly the bulky waste. We did not do that yet. We will publicly announce that out of the thought of the town EV blast on social media at some point.
Thank you. Any questions here, Council Luba?
Uh, thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Uh, one question I had is, well, first off, coming on the gazebo project of the Eagle Sound. Took a walk by the Crandall's the other day. Outstanding, the work that, that he's doing, that, that being done in there is just amazing. One question I have is when he was out there, he was cutting up that stump, that huge stump by hand. Do we have like a stump grinder to help the poor guy out? Because I felt badly. I'm not watching him and he just opened it with an axe. And, and I'm like, you know, so I don't know if we have a stump grinder that the town has that we can offer or anything like that, or, you know, maybe I'm putting out a plea to anyone that may be watching this if they have one, if not, to see, you know, volunteer, because I think what the, the plan that he's doing is great, but just watching that be done. I mean, I've tried taking things out half the size and I mean, that would be, that would just, that's just my comment.
If he's going at it on the surface, and I, and he mentioned this to me, with his chainsaw, that's, that's on him. At this point, it's not authorized or asked for by the town. If he's going to dig, there's a lot of procedures to call before you dig and DPW would have to get involved with that. It's right on the road. There are several. That stump, that tree had to have been cut thirty years ago. The stump is, is gotta be thirty years old sitting there. So there's a lot of rot that he's nibbling away on, I'm sure. As a part of that, as, as a part of this project, but concur, but if we start, we don't have a stump grinder we would hire out with you have a budget for that. But now you're starting, because we're right on the roadway, we have some rules and stuff we have to follow.
Thank you. That's, that's, that was just my comment. I, I appreciate the input on it. So thank you. That's all I have.
I think that's the one. Also just glad to know that a great reply for, I think, our last meeting or meeting before for the part of my ability, that we got some funding, so. Glad to give that news. Council Murray?
I was wondering if we had an update on any of the requests that were made at our last council meeting regarding the street takeover.
What's, what request was that? I can build all those.
Hold on, let me just open up my notes again. Sorry, that was the wrong. I asked for the information that Trooper referenced that was provided with the public forum to be made available to the town and the town council.
I believe that is in front of the presentation from the forum, I believe it's in our minutes. Which are also published online for access from the TV.
Okay, so that PowerPoint thing that was on our table, that was everything that was presented at that meeting?
To my knowledge, yeah, it wasn't in attendance, but all the
Kami, do you remember anything else?
I didn't actually watch.
I went out, I did. I went out and watched. That's everything.
But I think this is it. I think there was just the one.
Because the screen went up when we went back to the days.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Any other questions or comments? Jumping screens here. We're back and forth. All right, so there's no other question to town manager report. They'll bring us to item eleven, adoption of minutes. I would adjourn the motion to approve the minutes as all in the eleven point one. So by Council Murray, is there a second?
Oh, sorry, second.
Any further discussion? Seeing that all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That is unanimous. That brings us to twelve correspondence to council.
Sure, I saw ten emails that came through between June fourteenth and today. Three regarding sidewalks on the green, one regarding noise concerns, one regarding boards and commissions, one regarding tax bills, one regarding the car accident that was on the green, one, the publication of subcommittee minutes, one about old post roads speeding, and one about the tennis courts at Crandall. I just said the noise one.
Yeah, the Baxter one, yeah.
Yeah. Noise, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Samuel. I appreciate that because I could forget it. So I appreciate it. Check it out.
That brings us to item thirteen, chairperson's report. Not too much at this point. The sometimes where things kind of get a little quiet, but the next chair hour is the fifth, right after the holiday. But as always, if any of the other chairs from the other boards and commissions would like to attend, it's always open for anyone from the public and any of the elected officials, as long as there's a forum to meet and listen to residents' concerns. Which brings us to fourteen communications and petitions from councilpersons. Council Murray?
I have a question perhaps for Kami as our liaison to permanent celebration committee. How could we go about asking the permanent celebration committee to host a pride event next year?
I know they were asked about that in the past, so with the rec department, but I would suggest an email to the PCC to ask them if it's something that they would consider as a town sponsored thing, the lobby.
Okay.
I would say that could be the best way.
Okay.
Email to the, to the whole PCC.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. And just for some background, because I happen to have some information about this from my household. The P flag by their national guidelines or national charter are not allowed to host those events. So unfortunately, I guess, unfortunately, with the formation of a P flag chapter for Tallinn, you know, the people who were involved in hosting Pride here in Tallinn are now involved in P flag. And because of that, they, you know, unless they do it as an individual, P flag can't actually host it. They can sponsor it, they can support it, but towns all across the state, they have town sponsored events, you know, the West Harbor Pride, the Harvard Pride, the Middle Town Pride, those are all town sponsored events. So I think there was, I got asked how to do this. So thank you for providing me with that information. In the same light, I continue to request that we revisit the flag policy. And I will state again that this month I have seen the pride flag raised above our state Capitol. I've seen the flag blown at numerous towns halls across the state of Connecticut. I've seen pictures of the pride flag displayed at the White House, and my kids want to know why there's no pride flag hanging up in town hall. And right now I say it's not allowed and they want to know why. And I don't think there's, I, I'd like to see us revisit that policy. I would also like to say again that the Tallinn Youth Services Community Theater is starting up this week with the kids on the play they're doing this year as Descendants. This is through our, our human services department. This is a Nancy Dunn legacy. And I know she's still involved. I know Beth's very involved this year as well. We have some wonderful community members volunteering to work on this for all these kids. The kids are super. um, volunteering to work on this for all these kids. The kids are super excited. Um, the play will be on, uh, Friday and Saturday, July twenty eighth and twenty ninth. Um, tickets go on sale, I think, in two weeks at Human Services. It's a lot of fun. I, uh, just wanna make sure we all know about that. And, uh, that's it, thank you very much.
Can I respond to a couple of those? Sure, can you? Go ahead, it's appropriate.
Sure.
Yeah, no, of course you mean.
I'm sorry, the private P P flag, uh, event there, I was trying to make the P flag thing work. Uh, you're right about the national level in that it's, uh, problematic, but it's not impossible. And, but it does take some work, uh, and we could work it out. However, if that does not work, I mean, recommend one of the town committees maybe, um, host a Pride event somewhere there. Uh, I went to the one in West Hartford, that is a massive league, you know?
That's not what I was.
One, yes.
Absolutely.
Um, and so, uh, but I'm happy to, I'm happy to still work with with P flag if they wanna try to get it done. There are a lot of hoops to for them to jump. Um, as I'm, I'm sure you're aware, yeah, sorry that I forgot to mention the the school theater. There are seventy-five kids in town, uh, involved in that, and that is, you know, I mentioned the camp. Uh, between the camp and the amount of kids there and and the the school theater, our town is, are really going a long way, uh, to help out, um. How about with the, all of the, the kids here in town, so, um, thank you for reminding me of that. I apologize for that step, for not mentioning it in my town.
Thank you, Katie.
Yeah. Got my households there, so. Yeah, I kind of, um, I'm just real proud.
We're a team, we gotta come.
I know, you covered it.
So one good communication I forgot to bring up is July twenty-fourth at the senior center. There will be a veterans award ceremony for Vietnam veterans who are Tallinn residents. There will be, uh, working at the senior center, so I know this communication was sent down, I believe, by the town manager's office. I think it's gonna be a pretty significant event. Folks are able to make it, I believe that is, is it a Monday or Tuesday?
I thought it was Monday, I could be wrong. Uh, we're getting a lot of response, the respondents saying they're gonna be there, so, um.
It is a Monday, so Monday, Monday at four o'clock, there'll be that event, so.
Sarah's back, she's doing a great job with that.
I know, I believe, yeah, they were looking for smartest piece for any council members. I was sure if I could make it, um, due to my work schedule, but just wanted to extend an invitation to rest the council as a reminder. Any other communication petitions?
And, well, just wanted to read, I think, one comment. About, uh, what, uh, if I were. Lisa, Michael, whatever the home address is, once they wrote on the version, the, uh, union contract with, uh, they proposed, uh, uh, they want to jump on the town insurance ability, benefit, whatever it is. But they went back to Union Suggested Contract for the health insurance, everything else. I I think that that is cheaper than what the town, suggested to transfer to them, to the home town, town insurance policy, I don't think, whatever it is, right? You're right.
I I see Lisa's, I'm unsure how to answer that, she's, I don't know if it's, if it's.
I'm really having a difficult time. I know I heard my name mentioned, and I'm having a difficult time understanding what the question is.
I think they made, I think they made the fiscal, fiscally prudent choice on behalf of the entire town to keep the the, the health insurance plan the way it is. Um, that's what the Teamsters is, is the one I believe you're referring to. Uh, as opposed to, um, getting involved in in the battle and everything else, weighing the, the cost of everything, uh, be, which, between Attorney McCabe and, uh, Mike Wilkinson, uh, and then with Lisa's assistance in mind, uh, we made the decision, and obviously it passed, uh, through council here too.
It is, but if like, if they, if they could, uh, work a little bit earlier, so could it save, uh, somebody for the, on the, it's, uh, the only thing I'm suddenly.
He certainly omitted a debate, thank you.
Obviously, uh, you know, please, everything else.
Opinions would vary on that, yes.
I think everything, I think in most ideal situations, if union negotiation goes smoothly, your budget, that's expected, goes flat, you don't have to spend extra money.
Yeah.
Instead of going into potential arbitration or any other extended discussion.
However, the cost of insurance came down during that process.
Yeah.
And we were able to maneuver and save some money, so it was give and take.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Any other communications or petitions? Kind of thing you're feeling for.
Yeah, um, I'm really happy to hear about the parks. Warms my cold, dead heart, you know, that it's. You know, um, that was really the intent with the ARPA money, was really to kinda get kids back out there, and it helps the program, which hopefully will help it sustainably going forward. More parents are involved in it, they see the benefit of it and that. I love their own beaches, I love that the public can go to the beaches, all of those are really good things. So, happy to hear that. Um, also, I I do like the school program, the the play program is awesome. It's always good, it always turns out a good show in that. Um, on a side note, I just wanted to mention, um, on next week's bonding agenda at the state, there is a million dollars on there for Tallinn. For, um, offsetting the cost of the fire station, so we should be getting that money very soon, which will offset total cost of fire station repair. I'm thrilled about that, um, and I think we will have a lot more positive news coming forward for stuff that was, that was in the budget, so.
Um, and that's in relation to the, um, one.
Yes.
Or not, so probably a probation issue.
No.
No, all three, all three.
It's just a million dollars for the fire station repair, so the current one that we're doing right now can be applied to that. Um, it can be applied to any of the three that were in the original, um.
That was X four a long time ago, right?
Yeah.
On the, the, yeah.
Seven, it's been, it's been there for a while.
Being allocated next Thursday, so there will be a million dollars on that one, and as I said, there's other things that were put in for the budget that hopefully will yield, um, some really good results for the town. So, so that million dollars.
I don't have anything.
Okay, I thought you did.
Well, we see the fly.
Well, I just wanted, I mean, given the fact that this is a meeting that we have before the Fourth of July, I just, uh, like to wish everybody in our town, uh, Happy Independence Day. Um, and, uh, hope that we can all remember the, uh, the S A P prices throughout the country's, uh, formation, both good and bad, uh, and why, uh, why we celebrate. But thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Luba. Trying to go to anything else.
Something. If your dog doesn't like fireworks, call your vet now.
Yep.
Or horses, or.
Or horses, especially for cats, yes, call your vet now.
Oh.
I think that brings us to fifteen publicly listed participation on any subject from the jurisdiction of town council, the three minutes limit. If you're in the audience, you can approach the table and say your name and address, and then after the same, say your name and address if you're in line. Uh, we'll start with in person this time, so George.
You almost made it to the end of the meeting.
We're gonna have more public participation, sure.
George, uh, fishing game road, that's released. I have a, I have a hard time with, uh, town or the state or the federal government sticking arrows in everybody's business. Um, I think we need to look more in the separation of church and state, which should apply to everything. I have no problem with Memorial Day, Fourth of July, or Veterans Day. Those are the only things that, as a government, we should be celebrating, things such as that nature. Everything else, we've gotten like eleven, twelve, thirteen different holidays, now we just keep adding stuff for all these different reasons. I have no problem with anybody for any reason doing their thing, but it should be a private thing. The state and the town and the fed should not be involved in all this other business. Uh, we need to concentrate our money and our, our, our effort onto things that pertain to everybody, not special interest groups of any type. If everybody knows what I'm talking about, so that's my, uh, point on that, thank you.
Thank you, George. That brings me to online, Judy.
Yeah, yeah, and I, I can't turn my camera on because it says the host has disabled it, so, um, for some reason, that, it is why I, you can't see me, so I just wanted to make a comment on Mr. Luba's comment about trying to get this sidewalk project done in this, um, session, which we fully agree, we would love, uh, Katie Murray attended our historic district commission meeting, and she was hoping to have a decision by, uh, September twelfth, town council meeting, which I think is very, very doable. And, uh, by offering this new, uh, draft design plan of the sidewalk over on the east side, the whole purpose of it, uh, to shift the sidewalk to the east side of the green and meander through the existing trees, is so that the larger expanse of the lawn to the west provides a more convincing sense of the historic green, which is, has had for the last three hundred years. Um, I, this is in the historic district, it is a nationally registered historic place, surrounded by fifty-five nationally registered historic properties, and I would hope that you would respect that. Um, it took a lot of work to get it on the map, as well as get, uh, our Connecticut designated state scenic road here. And it would be nice to be able to have an appearance of a historic green that's ADA compliant and accessible to all. It's a a desire that we all want, we're working very nicely. I attended the Commission on Persons with Disabilities meeting myself. I was there and, uh, offered some information, and we shared thoughts, it was wonderful. I've been attending the Veterans Recognition Commission meetings, and we're working very nicely together there, and as far as the project goes, um, there's a lot of work that can already get started with the grubbing and tree removal. That's not even part of the ARPA funds. You can start cutting down that Christmas tree and removing all the vegetation, and the veterans recognition have already picked out a dark border, um, brick shaped, border and a lighter gray, which will go nicely with the benches that, uh, Mr. Foley said would be available for reuse. I sent you all a picture of them that were out in front of Birch Grove. And the colors will also go very nice with the veterans monument that's already there, so there's a lot of stuff that can already be getting started, as as far as moving this project a lot. So, um, I just hope that we can all come to an agreement and keep our green looking historic, and, uh, make everybody happy in the process. Thank you very much.
Thank you, George. That brings us to Sean Lappin.
Hello?
Yep, beginning.
Uh, Sean Lappin, one sixty-eight Mountain Spring Road. Uh, I just wanted to, you know, reiterate obviously my frustration with the contaminator well, but I also wanted to offer my assistance in any way, shape, or form possible. Um, and speaking with my attorney, who has been in contact with the town attorney, I believe, there's some, there was some confusion about, you know, cost of systems to mitigate this. Um, you know, basically like some of my quotes are exceedingly high compared to what the town has been aware of. I'm more than willing to share that, those information, cause so far I've gotten three quotes, forty thousand, thirty thousand, and twenty thousand, but the twenty thousand one has an asterisk because there might be some prefiltration systems needed based on current water testing. Um, again, if any information is needed, I'm also looking to get an engineer out to design the wastewater dispersal system that'll be needed at this property, if I were to go for an R O system. Um, again, if that's needed in any way to help expedite the process, I'm more than willing to help. Um, but I also wanna continue to press upon the council, this is a time sensitive matter. Um, particularly for me, um, I'm planning on, you know, building a house, and I have a tentative date for later on this fall. Um, and I plan on selling this house before then, and, or at at that point in time. And so I will need to have progress made on this in some capacity. Um, also, in speaking to my attorney, you know, there seems to be some holdup on releasing some of the records based on the way that the town is going about this. Um, with, and the insurance carrier essentially holding up some of these things, I'd like to see those things removed. Um, I know there's a FOIA request out there, and I'm shortly about to, you know, put in one myself, because I need this process to be moved along. And again, there's been no timelines discussed here, there's been no timelines discussed the last meeting, other than the report for my property and others would be along shortly. Um, well, shortly is right around the corner, so, thank you.
Thank you, Sean. That brings us to Claudette Moorehouse.
Oh, yeah, Claudette Moorehouse, eight nine Merlow Way. Um, just have a question, um, I know Brian Foley just, uh, said during the meeting that they're waiting on, uh, a consultant, um, is there a timeline, uh, associated with this, um, consultant's new report? And I was just kinda wondering why another consultant has been brought on. Um, is the town looking for a, a specific, uh, uh, report acceptable to the town with all of this? And, um, I was, like I said, I was just wondering what the timeline was. This has been going on way too long, and this is, this has to get resolved soon. Um, again, it was brought up at the last meeting that, um, you know, Kami said I brought this up six years ago as we met in the Big Y parking lot, so basically this has been, you know, on her lap for six years, and I don't feel right now that I'm any farther along now than I was back then. And we've had, uh, a D E P, um, testing for over a year, and they've been discarded as an unreliable source. You've gone to another consultant, didn't get probably the results that you wanted, now another consultant, how many consultants are the town going to, hire until an acceptable report is is given? So, um, you know, it's, it's, it's been, it's been way too long, and, um, if there's anything that the residents can do, um, reiterating what, um, Mr. Lappin said, we're, we're all willing to help the town resolve this, you just gotta tell us what we need to do. But, you know, we've been kinda kept out of the loop for a little bit, and, um, it's very frustrating, and it's time sensitive now, because my, my plumbing issues have, have got deteriorated. Thank you.
Thank you, Claudette. And other questions or any other communications, public participation? All right, seeing none, we will move to adjournment. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn at eight twelve P M.
Oh, no.
So, my Councilor Murray, there's.
Second.
Second, my Councilor Luba, any further discussion? Seeing none, I was a favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Actually, you're an absentee adjournment.